Get after him before you get a few bumps and bruises, right?
Jason Anderson, first year out for wrestling.
They're doing really good, isn't he?
Yeah.
Well, we could.
You know, in that case. He's been quiet.
Like.
He's a.
Sure.
Maybe a junior, but yeah, first year out, I mean, made it to state. Big boy.
But, you know, he's quiet and just don't say anything.
No.
But you talk on that night he came to the. That's nice to see, though.
So.
Are you getting all these or anyone else like your electronic filings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're supposed to all get them.
Okay, I am.
Yeah, yeah, we're supposed to all actually get a guy called me.
And.
We're on the list. He wanted to know if you should just send it to that number that's all of us on the website. Said, no, please send it.
How hard is it?
Otherwise, there are any things that doesn't come to our email.
Right. Yeah.
Comes to a collective email at the courthouse. Actually, nobody uses it.
That's right, because I don't get those with self insurance.
So you start building up knowing that we're on a new year as far as.
I have no idea. I mean, it's based on claims mostly. So, yeah.
I put that Amy said, you guys were doing all digging into that.
Yeah.
New year where people are paying their. Out of pocket, max out.
Right.
I know I'm going to call a number on our card because I want to make sure that the VA is sending bills to us. I'm supposed to be called disabled, so. I don't know.
Well, it should show on your explanation of benefits.
I've never got any.
Okay, then the VA must be taking care of it, then.
I, well, I'm under the pressure.
Let's call it order. My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Welcome to a nice rainy day. Well, my pawns. Has everybody had a chance to review the agenda? Do we have any objections to the agenda or is there any conflicts of interest? Not. Stands approved. We, do we, could you please read the minutes, ma'am?
You bet. February seventh, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty Rosberg, Chairman Presiding. Members present were Hayden Rossburg, Dozark, and Mulbauer. Members absent were Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved the board approved corporate court fees for January twenty twenty-three. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark to approve the following resolution. Twenty twenty-three dash thirteen in support of the joint raise grant agreement. Letter of support for the twenty twenty-three rebuilding America infrastructure with sustainability and equity. Which means is raised.
Yeah.
Grant project. Let's see. Voting, I, Rosberg, Mulbauer, Dozark, and Hayden, motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden to approve the amendment to the Crawford County Fiscal Year Iowa DOT Secondary Roads five-year program. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark to approve the purchase of the used two thousand seventy Hooverville bucket truck. From Stefan Truck and Equipment Inc. for thirty-six thousand dollars. Motion passed unanimously. Kaelin Bishop with Rolling Hills Region Mental Health and Disability Services met with the board to give an update of services she provides to residents of the county. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Hayden to approve a liquor license for stables at Copper Ridge. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made by the board about uses for opioid opioid settlement funds. Motion was made by Hayden, seconded by Dozark to approve tax abatement for parcel zero four one four two two seven zero zero five correction of ownership. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion was made by the board for city center RFP, no action taken at this time. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned eleven thirty-four AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
We have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Not. Some.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All power and Hayden on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We can carry.
That's okay. You're forgiven.
Okay. Supervisors report. Mr. Mulbauer, do you like to begin so you can kind of update what we discussed with Mr. Holt?
Let's, can I start first though with Region twelve?
Yes, sir.
The Region twelve meeting last week. We had the housing in the council government's meeting. How these funds are going well. There's a report here I can pass around all you guys, show you. Shows the break out of the six counties and where the funding is going. Each county gets a portion of the funding that comes through for housing projects.
How does it break that down? What just determined it, I guess?
You know, like Manal is getting a duplex and then a home trial house, so much funding goes to Manal, so it's just allocation of the funds.
Okay.
What projects? Had some projects. Here's some grants.
So they just dispersed, excuse me, they just dispersed the money based on who applies for it?
I mean, yep, yep.
Different cities, each county doesn't get a certain dollar amount.
Right, it doesn't come to us.
Right.
Based on a application of a project or, you know, a city asked for a trial house to become brought in through, you know, the prisoners are building those homes. And that's kind of how it gets. And they try to find, you know, spread it out throughout the county to get projects in each county. I said, Manal is getting a duplex on the old school property, you know, home trial and the new addition that's going to be put up for bids here.
It'll be up on the top for the east there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool. Good for you.
The different projects are going well.
What's the match on that?
It's on there. It's on there. Okay.
I'll do there.
I mean, the council government itself, we met, of course, we met first. There are a lot of firefighters grants are being processed right now. That was sent out to everybody and I think Greg sent it out.
Beating the fire better.
They said it was very hard to get a new truck through that grant. But they said, and maybe over the last twenty years, they've gotten four to five for our area. Does that sound about right, Kyle?
The, you know.
Yeah, it was a lot easier when it started, but.
But it is just a very, very competitive grant process for that, that grant. But you still fill them out and try to get what you can get and help our area out. I see here.
We don't apply.
That's right. We talked a lot about the fifteen million for the meat local lockers and that's coming up for a. Application process here, actually, it's open right now, up on the website. That's going to go well, they, they. Way, we view the applications month to month and there'll be a special board to oversee that process. And that Scott Stephan is the main contact through Region twelve for that. I'm a cabinet at most you could get is ten million, you'd just want to try to spread it out. They don't want to have one entity coming and get it. The top four processing plant, you know, basically, if you're in the top four or any meat industry, you can't get.
Yeah.
Any of those funds. It's more for your region on your smaller local lockers.
Yeah, nothing bigger than what we got up this last week, probably, huh?
So.
But mostly we're.
You can't, as long as you're.
That's the primary.
You can have some larger ones as long as you're not in the top four.
Okay.
Which, you know, it's, and there's some talk of.
Like the big wheel that's wanting to build down our council blocks, is he eligible?
Well, he probably, well, yeah, because he's not in the top four. That's how like that's going forward, too.
Like monogram, they probably would not be in the top four.
Right.
Wow.
Right. There was a little they did talk about looking into though. If you're subsidiary of a top four and you're getting the majority of your meat like a monogram, if that qualifies or not.
Yeah. A lot of their bacon, so they actually can process like for Tyson and some others.
And then, um, we also talked about workforce development, which is on our agenda for later on. There was already eight counties that had dissolved the twenty eighty agreement and I think the rest of the counties had it on their agenda to grow policy. And we can talk about that more when we get to that item on our agenda. Here's this one.
Question real quick before we move on. So Crawford County is missing the boat on getting any of these dollar amounts or we, how come everybody else has a couple in Crawford County that's zero? But yet over here is that Dennison with six applications and six projects being funded, those two separate.
Separate type of funding.
Okay.
And I'll clarify with Rick on that.
Okay. Because always hate because Crawford County is getting zero of allocated funds.
I think this one is, some of them they're going after homes that they can revamp.
Okay.
They got to find a home that isn't so far gone that the, the funding that they have can fix it up and get it back on the.
Because they can only get twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, right?
I have to check into that.
Because if they go past twenty-five thousand, then not a different pool of money.
Because if you find the house that's so far gone, it's, you can't get it up to so.
Well, you have to do it all. You can't, if it has a bad roof, you know, with windows and foundation, you can't do any of it.
And some will go back to our. Cities and our communities, you know, making sure that they're in touch with Region twelve and.
I did, my only concern about this is that the word isn't out that we should be applying for it because you and I both know Crawford County would have more need than any of these other counties just riding around.
And some of that is, I think, you know, like Chris Winker and Rick do reach out to the league of cities and then areas and I'll bring that up to him though, that.
So then these where we have six applications and six project funded is a completely different pool of lane?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
Different projects, yeah, there's different grants that some of CDBG grants and your other.
Or is this new? Because I did hear where the city of Dennison has some money now, but I don't know what they got.
I had to look into that one.
Okay, well, I can do some research, too.
Yes. But we're moved for it, we want to be in spend, it's helping our region out.
Yeah.
Then Ty and I, we met with Steve Holt and Terry and Dwayne, Paul was there, Colin showed up. And talked about our recalculation of our budget and going back to that, it was in two thousand thirteen when the multi-res and res. Change occurred and then finally it's coming to fruition today and there's miscalculation with the cop that was basically a two percent overtax. And now they're having the counties recalculate to fix that correction or to correct it. Which still puts us in the pinch of having to go back through and recalculate our budget when that actually gets passed and figuring out. How our budget works, they are going to give us more time, it sounds like it's going to be moved back to April thirty.
Better month.
Um. There was talk about the state is eighty, comes up to be about a hundred and twenty-five, twenty-six million dollars across the state. There was talk at one time of having amendment to this bill that would correct that miscalculation, having the state fund it. It makes you a rollback, or not rollback, but a backfill. And that's off the table, that won't happen. It's, it's going to be in our laps, we're going to have to correct it and move forward.
So we certify our budget March twenty?
When we have certified. Well, it'll be March twentieth.
Eight.
Was that, was that the date?
April thirty. No, 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 March, March, sorry.
March thirtieth, but it'll get moved a month if this bill.
So that date for us will change if they change.
If they change. But we have to proceed now as if it's.
As if they don't change our date.
We're still.
And they do that on April thirtieth.
If they do what on April?
If they do the, what was he said, a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-six million dollars?
Our, our recalculation of the budget.
So if that recalculation happens after we certify our budget.
It will, no, no, we'll have to do.
It will happen, we have to do. It should happen this week, I imagine.
I, I think so, too. Should.
They actually anticipated it might.
Take their recertification date to April thirtieth.
Right.
That's what that is.
Yes. They're going to back that up a month.
And then we'll have to go back and make some new adjustments.
Get your eraser red pen.
Because we're going to have to, it's going to come up shorter than what we have, so.
And we, and you know, that, that hundred and twenty-six or whatever it is, I mean, that is obviously your bigger.
Right.
Counties are going to have more of that, but still.
I think we have.
We were already pretty. We, we weren't getting ahead this year, you know, so I mean, I think it's probably going to make us have to go back and do a little cleanup.
So that spurred by, because of the multi-res deal, right?
Yep.
So is that the two percent contraction just on that or is it going to be property tax in general?
I don't know, that's the part.
I mean, that's.
That's what we're waiting to see. Yeah, because yesterday I went and refigured, so if they just take it off of residential class. That's like one point four million dollars of valuation decrease for Crawford County. But I don't know if that's it because of all the changes they made. Yeah.
Until they pass it and we know what's in it, right?
Right, and then we have to, so then we'll get, we'll get our rollback, our corrected rollback information from the Department of Revenue. And we also have to get new instructions from the Department of Management because we have to run our valuation process through that. And then that will change every taxing authority in the county, it'll change their values also. So everybody could potentially have to.
Board.
Revisit their budget.
Hospital.
Townships.
Yeah.
Cities.
Gotti, gotti, everybody.
Everybody.
So I think we had good conversation with them, we, we definitely made our point clear that, you know, we're, we're. Have a tight budget the way it is and we're very, very conscious of our levies and our taxing authority, but. This is going to happen, we're going to have to deal with it. You know, we brought up that and I think Paul did a good job bringing up this with his Department of increased costs of fuel. Materials, equipment of how we continue to maintain the level of services we do. While being restricted with the levies or potential budget head restrictions we're seeing coming forward.
Right.
And then there's also, that, the, the correction is one, that's, that's one deal. That's one mishandling. And there's new legislation in eleven twenty-four, eleven twenty-five that could completely, completely change our budgeting process and our levies and. Where the, it's, it's essentially that.
Looks like it's eliminating our supplemental.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're going to combine, I was reading up on that, you're going to combine some of the levies and. Right.
I actually sent Senator Schultz a message last night and he answered me this morning. I'll just read you back what he said about that, just for clarity here, sorry for the delay, blah, 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 that's. I am going to hear more about the bill and can give you more information after today. Hopefully I can get some background and pass that along. I did share with him the same thing we said to Representative Holt. You know, I mean, while we're cleaning things up, would also be nice if we maybe evaluated the windmills and some of these that we've got such a low burden of tax on them. Maybe they should do a little more to pay their fair share, especially to help our rural counties. I don't, and I'm not talking jacking them up a lot, I'm just saying, you know, a little bit offset to help, uh, help us, you know. We don't have the Sioux cities, we don't have Cedar Rapids or Des Moines or anybody to, to basically be a bedroom county off of, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we stand out here on our own, these rural counties, so we got to. If it's in our county doing business, you know, they need to add in up their fair share.
Especially since we're on our nineteenth year with the towers and it would have been our opportunity to maybe get a little bit more and then they change it to where if we change it, then we only get, you know, what it actually produces and, you know, that just really kicked us not being able to get any.
So anyway, I asked about that.
But a five or ten percent increase on wind turbine, solar, any of pipelines, you know, would be a huge boost to our budget. If, if you're looking at cutting property taxes back or capping the assessed values or limiting. Limiting the growth, I mean, that, we got to make up the difference somewhere.
Why don't we pay their fair share?
I was told here maybe, I was, but I, that because a wind turbine or a solar field or a pipeline is not a resellable. Item.
That's what they talked about down there last year at Supervisory meeting.
That's why they.
You need to tell me if somebody put one for sale or way to buy them. Call Wolf's.
That's, that's what they were told, so we were told.
Over the street, no, I might buy one.
Unless the tax credits go away and then there's no value in them.
Yeah.
Right.
And that could happen, don't crack me from.
But either way, they're going to allow the discount to operate and to make profit in our county that we don't get to. See any increase in assessed values like we were with a commercial property or industrial property or.
There's no profit in them, why are we getting more?
So.
Ding ding ding. Okay.
All right. Sorry. No, no, you have anything to add, I mean.
Well, we had, Colin was in there to discuss.
Oh, yes.
A few, a few of his legislative issues on the board. I'm not completely, you know, this is Colin's world, so I'm not going to speak too, too much to you, I don't want to say something wrong and be wrong. But they're talking about changing some of the ways that the Attorney General can actually come into the county. And exercise jurisdiction over cases if she doesn't feel. Or the, I, I guess she doesn't feel that it's being handled properly or, you know, there's been some cases where there's counties that have just, uh, I don't even know if they settled, they just didn't press charges on stuff that was criminally. Probably should have been, anyway, so there, and, and that's just my assumption on, that's why they're doing this, that's nothing. Like I said, I don't want to speak out of turn, I just, that was kind of how it rang in my ears as they were talking through it, so Colin's actually on, um, working with them. And I suspect that that he's probably reaching out to his part of ISAC and stuff and what have you to work on. You know, protecting home rule and, and how we do our cases here in Crawford County, so that was one of them, did you have some?
That's what Colin said, it really, it's an overreach by the state to come into a county elected official as attorney to tell them what they should or shouldn't do or to prosecute case that, you know, is already on the radar and in their laps and the authority to handle themselves. Because he, he does use the state attorney a lot, you know, they have ways that, you know, our county attorneys can use him, but. There's just a lot of concern there of, once again. Taking away home rule and our local authority to, of what our elected officials are doing. Ultimately, at the end of the day, that elected official is elected by the people of our county to do the job here and not by somebody at the state.
Gee.
I have a question, does he feel that's been a problem in Crawford County or is he just doing it in an abundance of caution that he sort of other counties and he wants to? Has it been a problem in Crawford County, is your impression or just he's trying to make sure that that doesn't happen in Crawford County?
Well, this is a new law coming out that.
Oh.
Legislation, legislation.
Legislation.
That would allow the state to come into any county in Iowa.
Yeah, so it hasn't been a problem, it's coming down the pipe that.
Well, it probably is a problem somewhere.
Okay.
We don't make a rule that it.
Currently Colin has the discretion of calling in the AG to prosecute.
Okay.
That, that would remove his discretion, it would be at the AG's discretion to just come into a county to prosecute rather than.
And even the FBI.
And removing all that authority out of the county attorney.
And legislation that would allow that?
Yes, yes, right. Colin came and talked to.
Okay. Did Holt give the impression that that's not going to happen or?
Um, I don't know.
He said he would take back Colin's concerns.
Right, he wrote a number of notes down on his stuff, so I don't know if they talked about things that he didn't understand were part of that legislation or would be affected.
Maybe.
But Colin was news concerned that, you know, also the state, you know, could come in and.
But that seems to be the target of the state currently, is a lot of home rule type.
Yeah.
Events, you know.
Seems to be, doesn't it?
Yeah.
You know, and Colin brought out a good point to Representative Holt about this, that, that, you know, it might seem like a great idea to the Attorney General right now, but she may not always be the Attorney General and that may not be the way you like it, on the other hand, you know, so.
Right.
Does that give them the jurisdiction then to come in and say, no, we don't want you prosecuting that case? Yeah, you know, I mean, it gives them rule over you, you know, I mean, and who knows our county better than our county, you know, I mean, so.
Could be a lot of a risk.
Colin's got a great point. Yeah, so.
You know, I'm guessing, like, everything that they're doing down there is because somebody's abusing something.
Somebody's somewhere.
Taxes, whatever it is.
Yeah, we watch the news, I mean, we can see what goes on out there across the country, I'm sure it's happened.
Laws are ever made, too.
I was just curious if, if Colin had personal in Crawford County as a, a problem for him.
I don't think so.
Okay, that's.
Just more concern of the state overreaching and dictating what we can and can't do once again in a local elected position.
Same thing we worry about on the budget and another.
You know, Kyle, I feel, feel like what really happens to our rural counties, especially yesterday in Crawford, you legislate for somewhere else and we get caught in the crosshairs.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah. It's no different than being in school, you know, they punished the whole school because one kid was.
Pulled the fire alarm or something.
Exactly.
Because of what you did?
I don't know.
He was one, getting the other.
Well, they're going to brush her finger, but you're right.
You're exactly, I think that's exactly what's going on here.
Yeah, they didn't just wake up one day and say that it's because. Good information, really, thank you.
But what's too bad, I feel like there's more rural counties in our boat that are being affected adversely. And maybe the few urban ones or the areas that are targeted, just, just like the board of adjustment and, you know, not allowing a farmer to be on it just because he retired and he would be innocent, right?
No, I mean, you just look at last year, for instance, how hard we worked to lower the levy because valuations went up, I mean, we, we, we tried to find ways, you know. But, and maybe some counties don't do that, they just take advantage of it and pad their pockets, I don't know.
The more rural we get, the less voice we have in Des Moines, so I mean, it just stands.
Right.
We're the bottom west of Iowa, you know, here in western part of the state, and there's not, I mean, look at our representation, I mean, just due to our population basis. I mean, Steve and Jason can bite all they can, but.
Right, we used to have two rats for Crawford County.
Oh, yeah.
And two senators for Crawford County, now we don't.
Good point. Yeah, we got a.
Treats for my birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Two people are going to get cheated.
I'm not supposed to get cheated.
Dave doesn't need way as a cupcake.
Well, I think that's why we, you know, continue to fight, make our points heard, hopefully, but you're right, you know, it gets harder all the time. I think that pretty much covered everything.
Yeah, I think so, too. But good meeting, I'm glad we met with him and he's. And I appreciate that he.
Are you set up to meet again or? Well, I mean, he's, he's like this morning, we didn't really have anything new to discuss with him and he didn't have anything for us, he's checking with me every Tuesday, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we, we, we have his ear if we need it, how's that, which is probably better than some counties have.
And I sat watching every, I'm seeing a lot of these bills and.
Yeah.
Again, I mean.
And you've been staying close kind of back to Lucas and.
Yeah, I'm glad we're part of ISAC, but here again, it comes right down to. Representation in the rural areas, they not always reflect the whole ISAC team, you know.
I, I will say though that ISAC top, top priority across the state is home rule.
Yeah.
Well. And if you take away home rule.
And that should be all ninety-nine counties should want, right, home rule.
You would think so.
But.
What you get together shouldn't be if you're urban or rural.
You have an ISAC meeting this week again over Zoom.
Good, let us know what you find out.
Can I draw on that?
Kyle, you missed the whole week, do you have something to catch up on or are we just going to hear a part of report on Jamaica?
Oh, I won't report on that. What happens in Jamaica State is.
It's not Vegas.
No, I just got nine one one board meeting all night, uh, yes, center meeting Friday, and I did, uh, receive a few phone calls in regards to our roads last week, but I thought, got around yesterday, it really. Came around pretty good, I, I was still agreeing on it, uh. Rain should actually help you sell out, so. I think your secondary roads, from what I seen on Facebook and what people are calling me about, I was glad I wasn't. Here to take a beat. And I didn't just go on vacation after I seen what the weather forecast had been, so, but, oh. It's about it, as far as I have, so.
But I don't feel like a lot of those spots are being hit and touched up and.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to work through it and we're going back into a colder spell here for a few days and a warm back and we just.
It's spring in Iowa.
It's.
Nearly going to be what it is.
Yeah.
You know, the last two years, we just had no moisture, so the roads were always in pretty good shape, and people got used to that, what spring in Iowa was about, so. You know, the last two years, we just had no moisture, so the roads were always in pretty good shape. People got used to that, what spring in Iowa was about, so.
But I think phone calls are good though. I mean, it's good to have people call and say, here's an area that, you know, needs touched up or addressed and.
Yeah, which though I did get a phone call yesterday, wanted to know what we were gonna do about our uh, uh, ninety thousand, a twelve percent increase on truck traffic, so. And I explained to him our concerns, you know, if we could pick the months to do it or all. I was thinking as a board, we're probably all in or not, because what, who are we to pick winners and losers if we just pick certain miles?
Right.
So.
And, and he said that last I said, maybe ten percent more weight is sixty percent more damage. That's an Iowa State study did that.
Yeah, I can believe that, you know? Just driving around on the yard yesterday. Just watched, you know, you're on a tractor, just watched that ground as you're driving. It's that's what's our highways and everything. It don't look like it, but it's moving underneath there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know. I wish we could opt in, but then yet put embargoes on February, March and April.
That's.
I know we can't. I mean, that's even an option. I mean, embargo's only.
You still, you still got people calling in for permits because you still gotta get hogs to town. You still gotta get corn to town.
What do they do at eighty thousand or?
Yeah.
They're good.
Yeah.
But not a.
Well, that's the thing is, you know, Paul had the, the elevator that called him that had to deliver feed and, and they literally were trying to find ways to help preserve our roads. Paul asked them to go half loads. They went to half loads. He tried to, they're trying to do it in the early, you know, like say from two AM to six A, seven AM, you know, before it starts. I mean, they're just different things that they were trying to work with it. And now if everybody tries that, we'd probably be in better shape, but then you gotta get the elevators and stuff to open at two in the morning as our farmers can all go in and.
That's a lot of added cost to run half loads and you're doubling the trips and fuel.
But it sure is that they're doing it.
Yeah, it sure does.
Yeah, sure enough.
Yeah, I just, I did see one post on Facebook complaining about our road, but you really looked heavily at it. It was a large grain storage facility where they just kept dragging mud and water onto the road all day while they were.
Yeah.
And they were trying to blame it all on the county law. You take some ownership in your roads too. It takes some stewardship of the roads, which those people were addressing by trying to haul half loads and doing times when the ground was a little more firm, so kudos to them.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's not, it's a challenge. I don't, you know, I mean, if, if we work together, you know, we got a better chance of succeeding and getting through it. You know, but one question or one comment that I frequently get is, well, we're just putting sand on the road. Well, first of all, it's not just sand, but yeah, there's some in there and all that stuff has to combine together to build up a base. If you just have rock out there, I mean, I got just, you know, rinsed rock on my driveway up in front of my garage and that's, well, it's on its fourth year now and it's still managed to set up. So that's what you get if you don't have a blend in there. And I think that that's probably maybe not as much of a blend in it as, as some people would like, but then once again, the cost. I actually did have another farmer call me recently asking what it costs for him to do like what we did down in, by in the middle of there on that road, how much would cost for him to put the rock out, you know, in year one? So, I mean, maybe that's, that's another alternative. If you really hate your road, is you call us to see what you can do to help contribute, so.
Well, and throw salt in one. Give that extra hundred and fifty thousand we used to buy white rock to touch up those spots like at this time.
Yeah.
Really, really benefited our county, but all of a sudden, all these property tax changes don't give us the funds to do it. Look at how fast our farm to market roads could deteriorate.
Exactly right.
It's hard. It's gonna, could be a tough evaluation on how provide services.
All because the state once again.
Yep.
Cut our revenue.
Mm-hmm. We'll get through it.
We'll find a way through it. We'll put, we'll put our five melons together and hopefully not knock anybody out in the process.
Put our five melons together and our five buckles on and we'll get through it.
Are you done, Kyle?
We're not taking the, we're not taking the clown car.
We're taking the Jeep.
I've been waiting.
Are you done?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I've been driving.
Greg, do you have anything?
Um, had a Wesco meeting last night and actually taking a tour of the Wesco facilities today at one thirty. And one of the things just popped up, I guess, at the meeting last night that their retention rate has gone up dramatically since they raised the salaries to all of their um, hourly employees. And I think they had five new hires last month and didn't lose anybody. And that's the first time that they've done that in a long time. They had as many as, I think, thirty-three, thirty-four openings, so they're down to just five. And their average hourly rate is nineteen thirty-one with the starting wage of seventeen fifty.
Understanding.
But they're twenty-four hours. I mean.
Right.
That's a tough, that's a tough job, really.
It is a tough.
And, and their revenues, I think that he said for the first time ever are gonna go over ten million dollars.
Outstanding. He does a heck of a job.
He does, right.
Really plays.
The whole region looks up to the way we run our.
That's all I got.
Facility.
Okay, well, thank you, sir. Jean, do you have anything?
Oh, my gosh, yes, I do. But I don't have very long, so I'll get to the important parts. Um, I did have a chance to speak to the sheriff, the school, Plains area, and I did call public health about the fifty-three thousand uh, uh, thousand dollars we have for the opioid settlement.
Okay.
Uh, Jill Wonder will be coming in today about ten forty to discuss what her plan is. Uh, she's coordinating with the school. So I'll be looking forward to hearing that. I had a few calls about gravel rolls off, so I don't usually get those because I live on a highway, so. Uh, and I did go out and drive them in my Jeep.
Oh, that's gonna suck.
And a little sloppy. Um, also had a lot of homework that I did um, on the pipeline, a lot of conversation about that. Uh, really trying to figure out, you know, with this pig launcher, it's not anywhere on our agenda, so it's fine bringing it up now. You know, what that really will entail and what it's going to be. Uh, you know, just like with anything else, you hear one side of it, how great it's gonna be and the other side, the, the hazards of it. And so trying to really just figure out what that really is gonna entail. Uh, the corrosion in the pipes is, is an issue, you know, that they're trying to, to avoid. No one really knows exactly, you know, how that's gonna affect. Uh, I watched a, a video on what happens if the launcher gets stuck, that it, you know, shuts the pipeline down for five days and, or they have to turn it off and you know, I think, you know, having two valves in Crawford County is a plus for us because that can be shut off uh, very easily. So, you know, some things that maybe look negative, maybe seem a little more positive uh, after watching videos. Um, but that was uh, kind of my day. I, I didn't really have any meetings. There's continuing to have um, design meetings for the wellness center redesigning that to get the, the cost down, figuring out what's gonna stay and how they're gonna kind of flip it a little bit. Though there's gonna be a cost with the architect company to, to do that, but, you know, we really do have to get that cost down to where our uh, uh, committee that's out getting the pledges and grants feel they can be successful without having any tax burdens on our community. So uh, very proud of that committee for all the work that they are doing and um, we're gonna make this happen. Uh, the senior center, I did talk to the mayor and uh, they let them know that that probably is not moving up to the wellness center and they're just fine with that. So good news and bad news. You know, you think they'd be disappointed, but they're okay that we're not gonna put the senior center up, up here, so. So there's the good news. Um, yeah, a lot of things going on this week and I apologize about my phone going off every five seconds here. They're trying to get state T-shirts lined up. And so, um.
A good motion.
Yeah.
Good luck, yeah.
Thank you. It's uh, kind of a, a big fun deal. They closed the school T-shirts off sooner than they thought. And so now my one granddaughter is trying to facilitate getting T-shirts made for everybody and I don't know, somehow I'm involved in that, but uh, bet you guys can't guess how.
I guess.
On your corrosion question, whatever, within the pipeline, are they within the pipeline or outside the pipeline?
Uh, the video that I looked at.
My knowledge is through my fire background is corrosion only happens when oxygen is present. And this is an oxygen, there will never be any oxygen within it, so it should not ever.
We hope, yeah, yeah. It was the, the video looked more like.
Corrosion is the smallest form of fire that is.
Yeah.
Chemical chain reaction.
Rust is fire.
But for every video that has that, there's another video that has, so.
Exactly. I appreciate your way and then.
Yeah.
Because like I said, there's one, one way, two the other way.
Absolutely.
On the other side.
Uh.
Made videos that counteract videos that are out there.
But you know, you think about it. You know, like especially under a roadway where we're using a lot of salt or calcium. I mean, if that's seeping into the ground underneath there and the pipes under there, that, that is, you know, I mean, now it's still gotta get oxygen, but water has got oxygen.
Videos too, y'all, if y'all wanna.
Let me just, it's, 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 that's kind of a legitimate, you know.
Little bit, yeah. And so it helps us to understand.
It would take a while.
Yeah. Oh, I, I get that, but I'm just saying, that's a way you can see oxygen and salt getting to it. Otherwise, I couldn't see any way where it would get to it. But if they sleeve that in them areas, then you probably.
Do you have any feedback from the city mayor and us?
Oh, I did. Uh, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, I did get the documents in which the uh, uh, airport back in November of twenty twenty-one approved the pipeline, the way it was designed, coming close to the airport. And that was signed off by Terry Crawford and Pete Crawford. Uh, back then, I do have that, those documents. I was gonna forward them to you, but I'll just pass this around. Uh, that's, those are kind of the documents and that's the way that they signed off on it. They are also dealt with a, an engineering company. So, yeah, that, that computer doesn't work like every other computer that works with, so.
It's kind of mine of its own.
It's been that way since the day I got it, but uh.
Maybe so.
I learned it. I thought that originally until Dave is also having problems, so.
Alright.
Uh, and I deal with it.
It's just that side of the table.
It's just.
So I used to have.
Why is it on this side?
Yeah, but it was a busy week. A lot of conversations going on, um, and so, um, and, and then also, uh, the question came up, uh, did we have a fifty-foot easement? And now the question is, is the temporary easement another seventy-five feet? So that there's gonna be a hundred and twenty-five feet uh, with the easement? The temporary easement while they're working on it, that is it, uh, that, is it a hundred and twenty-five feet while they're working on it that they actually own in the, and so I pulled, I pulled an easement today. I should uh, redact the names, but I didn't. I just had them, so.
Look at it till then.
Uh, I, here's the temporary. Uh, I haven't had a chance to, to look out, look it all over, but this is one of the longer ones, I do believe. Uh, I'll pass it around for your review to see, kind of see what that looks like. But it, is it? And I, so the pictures that I've been seeing of what it looks like after they put it all together, I mean, it's eight years before that strip looks. And even after eight years, you can still tell exactly where that pipeline, or, and there are pipelines all under the United States of America is, uh, if we had a, a picture of that like we did of Houston, it's.
Well, the Houston thing though, I mean, you know, there's no ordinances in Houston.
No, no.
Actually, there, that is their bread and butter and them pipelines have probably been there since.
None of them are carbon down there.
That's right. None of them are carbon. Uh, and.
I mean, that's not a good example. Give me some, a good example.
Well, in this conversation of apples and oranges, and then sometimes you might have a banana in there. Um, it, it just boils down at the end of the day, we don't really know what this looks like under Crawford County with our farm ground. Uh, we have so many moving parts to it with the ethanol and the corn and uh, the protection. So I've been trying to do my due diligence and getting to become more knowledgeable on the pros and cons of all of it.
Hmm.
Um, and that's my report. It's what I do when I'm on the board.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I was gonna bring up, um, correct me up, I heard this right, but when we talked with Representative Holt about his eminent domain bill.
Good.
He had brought up that he is working on one that it goes along the lines of still the ninety percent um, landowner sign up. And there's a few other caveats to that as well, um. But he, he's working.
Cat, doesn't it have to be that the other states have said something about the, the states that that has to, we can't.
They can't start construction in Crawford County until you, the whole project gets passed, so that, you know, start and then all of a sudden it.
Because once they have their first shovel of dirt, they consider it started and so.
But he is working on that. He would have told us. I don't know how far it'll get, but, and there's a few others that will.
Seemed like there was pretty good support for that though, because.
At least on the house.
In the outside. On the outside.
Is it all gonna get done in time?
Well, good question. But I think, I think that, uh, if you look at some of that stuff we're getting back from I U B, I think they're taking that all into close consideration as well. Sounds to me like the I U B probably tends to err towards the side of, of private ownership. I'm sure they're probably quite fair about what they do, but me like there's some pro, that's the mostly pro down there.
So I don't know if you guys looked at this then, uh, the FAA has also weighed in. From the FAA, 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 you know, got it in my brain.
Yeah.
Uh, kind of talking about the airport, airport land specialist, federal aviation uh, central region has weighed in on the pipeline. Where they originally had it planned back in November of twenty-one, they basically signed off on the land for that, because that was always our concern, if it was coming too close.
Hmm.
The only concern I have is that, that drawing changes every time you look at it. So I don't know if we need to go back and revisit it, but just making sure that, um, you know, the things that were concerning to us, that if they've already been addressed, that we don't pick them up and reinvent the way I want to spend invented and uh, not double up on our efforts to make sure that we're protecting what needs to be protected.
Hmm.
So, um, that's what I did all week. And design T-shirts.
Thank you. You only finished just in time for Paul to not be here.
I walked as fast as I could.
You did, you did well, man. Thank you. We do have a meeting that we gotta get to at noon, so we don't wanna run too long and we've got plenty to do.
Uh, till he gets here, I'll also add that, uh, the way that, the things that I've looked at is the compaction for the farmers and that none of the easements are written in favor of farmers. It's kind of, uh, what my research has shown.
On the easements, it's not written, written in favor of the farmer?
Need to be concerned. Nothing written in favor of farmers. Just some of the herbages wrote down, uh, and that has to do with the tile and, uh, in Crawford County, we don't have as much tile as we do in Chillicothe, it's my understanding, but it's still a huge, huge problem of who fixes it and how that happens, uh, if they're going above it or below it, who's going in for it, who fixes it? And that's kind of a big, well, it depends, kind of an answer.
Yeah.
And I, he's just doing anything. And so until you have that in writing, who does?
Look at Kyle, you brought up one of the good points for Crawford County. You wanna see it restored back to the value that it early in this day. And, yeah, even construction, you wanna see our roads preserved in the integrity that they are today.
No.
But you can't assume that somebody else is looking after all of that for us. And if other counties have things in place that assure that that's gonna happen and we just assumed they're gonna take care of everything.
Those are our, our priorities still.
Correct.
Yeah. What up, Paul? Mr. Inger, how are you today?
Nice spring, really spring rainy.
No, just in the middle.
No one's not raining too bad.
You're gonna rain all afternoon.
Sleeping in with the hurricane. They haven't been out yet.
There were a lot of grain being moved yesterday.
Yeah, I don't think too good day.
It was a great day to move it and so.
I think it's gonna be wet the rest of the. That was my plan, I think.
So.
I even got calls from that.
What she did.
You did.
I said that your sleep tone.
Call Paul.
I said, oh, and I'll take the drywall.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do it is?
Okay.
Never mind, I was looking.
Oh, there you go.
Hey, you're making a burkin', okay.
Yeah.
Morning, yes.
Steve?
Still forty-one and O.
That's it, yeah. That's what it's made of. Yeah. Anyway, did it really? Yeah, so. Yeah, well, the, uh, the roads I suspected in the next few days are gonna be pretty crappy. We had some good, some good weather, uh, you know, there's this rain. Take some of that frost out, things will firm up, you know, again.
Just so it frees up again. You know, we're paying for this warm weather at some point.
Yes. This is not ten inches of snow. So we gotta find something positive, and we need moisture, so, um, so that's a good thing.
Fill our cattle ponds.
Yeah, so the guys are, you know, they're, we're continuing to haul crush limestone. This, this is what you see to me, calls and so on and so forth, and, and, and as we're able to get out there, so. So, yeah, it's, it hasn't been too bad. This hasn't been too bad this spring so far. Um, so I have four, uh, we got the contract bonds and certificate of insurance for the, uh, the bridge over the Soldier River there on L fifty one between Ricketson Charter Oak, so. I'm motioning to, uh.
I'm making a motion to approve that contract bond certificate of insurance. Second. My motion's been made by Mr. Schultz and seconded by Mr. Dozark to approve the contract bond certificate of insurance for the Graves Construction, Inc., in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars and sixty five cents for the construction of the bridge replacement project. Lots of numbers, bridge over the Soldier River. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
I aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
As soon as I get done here, I actually got my digital ID.
Oh, really? Awesome.
It's amazing how happy it can be on a Friday afternoon when that all works out. Just sign, and honestly, I don't know that you need to sign this, but I'm gonna have you sign it anyhow, because.
Where you got all the other blue ink?
Right, correct, yep, right there. And, uh, because everything is digitally signed anymore, but I'll just have you sign in case I have to upload that and put it in Doc Express, which is a really good system. It it really is. Uh, it, and and so it just, you know, any type of new technology that gets adopted has its growing pains, and that had some too, so. But, uh, as far as, you know, your digital ID expires every three years. I didn't know that.
It's been that long already?
When we did that, yeah.
I'm surprised it's not more.
So anyhow, I had some issues with the email because our emails had changed, and that was still tied to the old email, and so I had, I had to get that changed first, and then I thought, oh, my God, then it popped up, I had to change my digital ID. And, uh, but actually went really, really well, so, so I should be able to go back downstairs, sign the contract and move on. Okay, so it is a good system. Uh, the, uh, I did wanna just kind of share this with you quick before we go to item six there.
Yeah, I didn't say no, no, Jeff.
It's hard to tell, really.
Here, you put it wherever you want. Whatever looks bad. It's a file sign. Somebody just took and cut, they just cut them off, uh, and then threw them all in.
What logic?
Did, did, did you all get the email yesterday? Did everybody get that? Um, because I, I sent an email, and and so uh, I checked this morning, because I didn't hear back from anybody, nobody, not law enforcement, not anybody here. I thought, God, I wonder if it went to the right place, so I checked it, but anyhow, so I did.
Sure, did you want me to send that? That'd be a T.
Maybe it was just you.
Maybe T F is the only thing I have to reply to.
You did not get it, yeah, but you, you got that email.
Yeah.
You did with that picture.
I guess I knew about it, but I'm thinking it came through a text message from Dwayne.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, I have to go back and revisit that.
I got it.
So you got it.
I did not get it. I got.
Well, I'll resend.
I didn't get anything in that board supervisor.
Yeah.
You don't get nothing there.
Hold on.
Mine was from Dwayne Zink.
Right here was yesterday.
Yeah, because I sent it to him, and then I, I sent it to, so it, so it got the tie.
It's got, well, it's got jury vote left, too. She got somebody.
Yeah, so I checked that this morning, and it kicked me back, Jerry, so that's why I was wondering if I had it. But then I checked it from my board. Here's the weird thing. So I've got a, a, a email as board, okay, and all five of your names, I updated that right up in the first year. But it still send it to Jerry and Eric, so I gotta figure out what happened there. Because when I went back in and I checked it, it was like, okay, why did it say, right, their names weren't in there?
Well, and I think, I think Jake has set up, set up a board supervisor group also.
Yeah. I, I'll, I'll check with him, because, uh, so you got it, Dwayne got it.
What was it about?
Assuming law enforcement, it was this, it was this, it was just kind of an update that, you know, this had happened.
I don't see anything less than law enforcement on this call. It's a Sean, Ben, Eric, Jerry, Gene, Kyle, and me.
You guys come down and take a look at mine. Mine has boards, sheriff, Dwayne Zink, and Sean.
Well, at least they were.
Got some place. Yeah.
Yeah, that was nice.
Yeah, uh, but, you know, it.
It makes no sense. I'm guessing somebody's dad seen him in the back, or somebody's picked him and said, get rid of this.
Yeah. It's unfortunate because it costs money, time, effort, everything. You have to put those back up, and it's pretty senseless, but, um, but it happens. Unfortunately, uh, the grader surfacing contracts. You know, so the one thing I wanted to share with you there is, you know, we're looking at the good thing about Stratford is that we get the material produced in twenty twenty three that we need in twenty twenty four. And I, I'm not gonna say this is necessarily a bad thing about them in particular, but it's, it's what Mother Earth has to provide to us, okay? Is the gradations are getting finer, and you'll hear people talking about, hey, I don't want the sand out there. But the gradation they're proposing is seventy five percent of that material, up to seventy five percent of it could pass through a one quarter inch strip, which is that big.
And then that still breaks down the rear.
Yeah, and not very much, and dust off. Yeah, I'm just kind of at a loss as to what to do, I'll be honest with you. I had a long conversation with James Frank, who's one of the owners of Stratford. There's three of them. He met with Monica and James, you and I, Cecil. We were trying to figure out what to do. Um, you know, and, and, you know, he, you know, this was kind of an honest conversation. He, I said, because we keep things finer, the citizens aren't happy with that. The problem is, all the good stuff is gone. Gone.
Gone.
Okay, and he said, you know, he said, Paul, I'm sitting here looking at my son, he wants to get into business and thinking what's gonna happen forty years from now. That's a good thing to be in. I mean, this is the reality of our grader surfacing goals. And I'm gonna share that with Farm Bureau, and I've said this for the last twenty years, is that all the goodies are gone. Yet, I hope people call, complain, people call and they complain about it. That's what I'm sharing with you, and we had that grader surfacing summit three years ago. There's no gravel in seven counties. And we're going, and we're going, you know, we're going now to Carroll County possibly next year. Uh, we're gonna go up to, uh, you know, Sack County. And, you know, the good stuff is gone. There's still material there, it's just heavily laden with sand and smaller material, and so they supplement that with crushed limestone. You do things to try to make it better, but, but, uh, you know, so I don't have a good, I, I do not have a good.
How is Martin Marietta's supplies?
Oh, they got endless supply of crushed limestone up there. We went toward that mine, you know, went down there, generational supplies.
And next to that goes all.
Goes for a long ways, you know, so here's the dilemma. Their, their source is a hundred miles away, three hundred feet underneath their surface. It comes at a cost to us.
Right.
So if you wanna talk to fellow supervisors, you wanna talk about equity, which is a big buzzword these days, is that we're sitting in an area that's gravel poor, and it costs us a significant amount of money to get that here.
Have they been keeping up with the rail?
Well, they don't do anything this time of the year.
When it's running.
We had probably our best year last year in terms of getting, uh, crushed limestone real then, and so, you know, I mean, that, that's where it's gonna have to come from. And I'm really kind of, you know, how much do we spend on, and it gravel's pretty good, it's not all gonna be that, that they could go to that if we sign a contract. They could go to that gradation, and that's the envelope that we agreed to, so. Or you can have crushed limestone. Don't wanna be sober in here, but it is a fact.
And Stratford think they could haul in the White Rock to them and blend it in to get.
So I'm gonna talk, I mean, we, we, this year I told them I wanted to go from ten percent to fifteen percent to a little more crushed limestone, and so I get, this can get us about eight dollars a ton up there. The material, they're gonna try to work in New Fit over by Willie, um, but no one's really seen that yet, so I'm kind of committing. And, you know, they've told me, hey, if you don't like it, we put it up, you don't like it, you know, which is really good. I mean, they're really good to work with, but in their defense, too. It's what you have and what you have to work with.
Compared to Hella, who just said.
Well.
Here's your product later, we'll get it to you when you want.
There, there was, there was never any reliability.
Right, or Stratford.
And although I'm getting some from the beginning this year, but that's not gonna go on the roads, that's gonna go in the stockpiles. We just didn't have any reliability on when it would be produced. And, you know, so that became problematic for us trying to get it on the road, so. But I'm just sharing with you that, you know, as people call and they say, you know, you put nothing, the sand on, I mean, you know, the, the, the other side of this is you say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna send a bunch of trucks to Fort Dodge, and we're gonna haul a whole bunch of crushed limestone at twenty five or thirty dollars a ton and get it down here, because if the truck is probably gonna be closed for thirty dollars a ton. You know, compared to seven and eight dollars a ton. Something like that.
Eight dollars a ton does not include our.
That's not the truck.
That's not the truck.
No.
That's your probably.
Seven fifty over here at Willie, but.
Would you add on for tracking a couple bucks?
Oh, gosh, no, they, yeah, yeah, so, so you just say twenty cents a ten mile, so for every mile you haul it, say thirty miles, my average, I mean, we're hauling some at forty, fifty, sixty miles away, you know? Fifty times, you know, twenty cents, ten dollars a ton, it's more than the cost of the material.
That's why I had to ask that, because that ruined.
Yeah, I will spend three quarters of a million, eight hundred thousand dollars this, this calendar year hauling gravel materials.
And you still wanna haul it at a specific time where, where the trucks don't have other things to do.
Yeah, we're already.
Otherwise, you're paying more to get it.
With haulers to try to line up and get enough. Now, we get it, you know, and, and, you know, we manage that all in-house. You know, so we're, we're getting it in that twenty to twenty one cent a ton mile. Ty knows, and there's a lot of counties paying twenty five to twenty seven cents a ton mile. Every penny you add.
Where they all.
Heyman is about thirty thousand dollars a mile, so we, and we're getting pretty good value because we work with local truckers, we manage everything, send the bills out. And, um, and trying to get as good a value as we can, but, um, anyhow, it's, it's, uh, something I'm gonna, you know, continue to kind of work on. We'll talk about it at Farm Bureau today, and, and I like to get people's input. Okay, you know, you want, you, you know, what do you want us to do? You want us to, you know, quit grading and just spend all of our money on crushed limestone one year, and, you know, or, uh, quit doing all these other things?
That'd be good for Farm Bureau, though, because they actually do send out them monkey surveys and stuff, so let them.
What do you want us to do? You know, we're trying to improve those level B roads. That comes at a cost. I shared that with you last week, you know, I mean.
What if some of our neighbors, you know, and these things like Shelby or, I don't know.
They're, they're doing the same thing. Yeah, I mean, Shelby's coming up here to get crushed limestone out of ours. After we had a grader surfacing summit, they started coming here.
None of them, no. None of them are going a hundred percent limestone.
No, no, no. Now, you could just say, hey, we're gonna not do all this other stuff for a year or two, and we're gonna haul a bunch of crushed limestone. You know, try to start to build up the base a little bit, and that's an option. You know, we can even use foreign market money to use on pavements, bridges, other county, some counties do that, they'll have a million or two, two million dollar uh, foreign market contract, and then you can haul it on all the foreign market gravel roads, you know, that's an option, so.
Might get to that.
Yeah, just, just kind of sharing with you kind of what, what we're up against.
Options.
And some possible options, so. Spring auction, that's, uh, the twenty eighth of March, and here's a kind of a, a listing. You're on the cutting edge of getting the new. They get first, so just to have a bucket truck, we did get the new bucket truck supposed to come tomorrow. And the, uh, and then the, the one, Cannon Axon dump truck is one that we're getting rid of, one that we replaced last year. And we just got an old pickup, a couple of trailers out of the roadside that we haven't used for a number of years, and so that's all we have there. And then, uh, you have, you know, the SS four A and the raised grant status, so the raises the grant there. Out here for the Donner Reed Road Bridge, and, um, you know, I had to get letters of support, um, just got a lot of, a lot of stuff. And hopefully that'll all be wrapped up here by the end of this week, and we can get that submitted and see where we land on that. Then the SS four A grant is the safe streets for all, and that, um, is specifically targeted to the safety elements in the project, so. Just as a comparison, last year we did Buck Grove, or twenty one, I guess it was, um, uh, you know, we did that paving, we did the shoulder widening, your shoulder paving, the rumble strips. And we were able to get some transportation safety improvement program months. We got a half a million dollars, and that paid specifically for that part of the project. And so the SS four A is kind of the similar one. It's the federal level, and there's a lot more money there. So it's when I talked about putting in L fifty one from Charter Oak South and L fifty one from one forty one north to E sixteen. And so we're gonna put that together. We got our local road safety plan updated. I don't know if you remember last summer, there was a big push to get all the counties to, to put a grant together and get money, so that was all paid for. It's updated. I've been working with a consultant that's doing that to kind of tweak that just a little bit. Um, and so, uh, we'll be in line, and we're, we're getting the plans ready, and the cost estimate's ready, we're gonna go ahead and submit that. Um, what I'd like to do, when we get to that point, is work with them to submit, or perhaps work with them to help submit the local, the grant. You know, I just don't wanna push the wrong button, or, you know. It might cost us a few thousand dollars, but I think it might be money well spent, because that's what they do, uh, in, in terms of getting the grant submitted to, um, to the reviewers, so, uh, the period opens in April, goes to, uh, September. I'll have a lot better numbers for you here in a few weeks on, you know, how much we're gonna submit for it. So that we just pay for the shoulder paving on those, the rumble strips. And, uh, anything in the center, but it'd be a huge huge for us if we could get this. Probably pay for half the cost of those projects, so. So, you know, that's what we're trying to do there.
Make it pretty much similar to what we got down there.
Just like, uh, E sixteen was less late, Donner Reed South, but real payment, same, same.
Same sort of.
Yeah, all those pavements were done, late fifties, early sixties, they're narrow, you know.
Ninety six widen trucks for you.
Yeah, so.
Paul, appreciate you coming to our meeting, Representative Holt, and I thought that was.
Yeah, yeah.
Voice our concerns about
Yeah.
our funding, and I appreciate you laying out your actual costs and how it's gonna affect us.
Yeah, e- everything's going up. Just got the quote for pavement marking paint, you know, it was just a few years ago. I mean, uh, uh, you know, the latest bill for diesel fuel, if you look through there, you know, another fifty thousand dollars for fuel, yes, you know, and so, um, yeah, it, it's kind of an interesting dilemma that we're in, is that, you know, the increase, the load, you know, in, in, you know, proposal did allow more weight, more stress on the system. Uh, costs are increasing, uh, but yet there's this push to reduce revenues.
Yes.
You know, as I told them, I said, you know, isn't my job to come and, you know, cry to you about how much money we need or whatever, but my job is to take the money, I get to do the best job I can with it. But there'll be a day of reckoning if we continue down the path that we're going, so. I thought it was a good meeting, too, and so, um, Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau.
Lunchtime.
Hopefully we're done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll be done.
I said, hopefully we're done by then.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, just somebody knock on the door and let me know, we're going down. Thank you.
I'll be there. I brought my whiff today. But we gotta discuss and take action at ten fifteen, so we can't get too carried away. Did anybody else have anything to add? To, um, go through my email and notes, make sure I'm not forgetting to say something that matters. I will say that I've had some, uh, concerns over our droughts. I mean, hopefully Mother Nature's changing her tune, you know, with wells being down and everything like that, this is something that we need to be, maybe doing some investigating for the future to make sure we don't run out of water. With rural water, you know, what brought my, brought to my mind was like, because of Nelson Park and rural water, talking about, you know, that they've got their issues to deal with, and just some, some things that I've been worried by, you know, and what brought it really to my mind is I was watching the new special on the new oil is water. You know, it's gonna be so darn valuable and hard to come by for. You know, it's gonna be so darn valuable and hard to come by for good clean waters, so.
Or is that on California, where they buy land just for the water, right, it's underneath of it.
So, rural water, talk about having a shortage. Not really talking about a shortage, but I mean, obviously drought years are generate concerns, I mean, I just, you know, how long are we gonna have a drought, I mean, if. The climate change thing is really something that's, I mean, mother, if we've got, what, seventy years of real statistics that are viable. Predicting whether to, I mean, you know, I can't predict her, I can't predict my wife, any female, I have trouble with her. So I sure can't predict.
Maybe they'll own their skill.
Yeah, in any event, that was supposed to be. All right, I'll take it.
Very little, oh, sorry.
But the, uh, you never know where that could, you know, where it might lead to. Just something to think about.
Rural water, you know, more people hook up to it, you know, attacks of the system more, I mean, like Lake Mead, I mean, when they built that in the thirties, there was plenty of water, because Las Vegas had a population of like a thousand people, or whatever it was, you know. So now you put forty million people drawing water out of that same little pile pond, it's gonna go to an alabaster. Unfortunately. Whether they split that off, everybody wants, it's amazing, that river don't even make it to the ocean anymore, dried up before it gets there.
Yet they want a green golf course lawn, and they live in a desert.
But, yeah, I mean, it's all in, all what you want on it.
But just bringing it back to here, you know, those are some of the things that I've had a couple of thoughts in my mind, you know, I mean, it's just like electric, they're pushing for electric cars. I mean, comments aren't made, if everybody could have the people in Madison, had enough electric cars, then all DMU's got enough electricity to pump out to everybody. You know, so is that walk between water and electricity, I suspect, um, when our. Course is changing towards that direction, maybe there's some things that we better be looking at towards the future.
Todd, you heard anything about, this was brought up, actually, a simple party, I was asked that Ford and GM and Chevy and all of them are, are looking at doing like our bulldozers, where it's a diesel.
Yeah.
Engine over electric.
I think the two things they're looking at are that one, but then they're hydrogen. Hydrogen pickups and, and, and big trucks, I think that's probably the better route to go, to keep up. To where we can actually move towards a more carbon neutral footprint. Tax on electric, yeah.
You heard that on semis at all?
The hydrogen?
No, or the diesel.
You know, I haven't, I haven't heard it on, you know, the diesel over electric here as much, you know, I mean, I'd like to see somewhere we did even a, cars where, where you had an eth- ethanol, you know, an E eighty-five driven engine over electric, you know, I mean, basically uses two renewable, renewable fuels in, in one vehicle, then, you know. Starts that, I don't, to me, that's something like a.
I would just call it a clown car.
No, just, this stuff we're thinking about, I mean. But we see, if we see projects coming along, I think that those are things that we should be thinking about as far as grants to improve things.
What happens in a power outage? Stay, stay home, how long are the lines gonna be when we come back up, and what's the constant, all that gonna be, and there's a lot of moving parts to that, too.
On the roll, they said John here had plans for the forty twenty back when the A's were being produced, but they were scared to roll it out, because people wouldn't be ready for that. And I think they might, might have jumped it, there's gotta be a systematic plan, and right now, we just threw the plans on the table. As far as converting to electric, yeah, no infrastructure in place yet.
Got the current.
Same, especially out here in the Midwest, you know.
There's some technology with electric, I mean, look at our electric chainsaws, that all those farmers would never give back. That you start to get a taste of, something like that, in the nation, you'd think that the market would find ways to transition, like, you're talking with hydrogen or diesel over electric, until you get a sustainable grid.
Yep, even all the, the wall tools I have in my shop that charge the batteries. If that's amplify that, everybody that's got twenty dual tools plugged in, how much more that taxes, the whole grid. I don't wanna get them out, but.
Well, that's kind of where my mind is going, when I was reading, you know, doing a little bit of research there, I mean, it's, is it something, you know, part of our job for the five people sitting here is to make sure we're always looking forward, you know. Protecting our country in the future, so where we don't leave a mess for a, a board in ten years, you know. I mean, I just, I was reading one article about Sioux Center, working with their, uh, their, their big dairies that are close up there, and they're, they're, you got that, I don't know what they call that, system they put on the lagoons, or, it basically captures the.
Methane.
Methane and, and turns that into natural gas, and they're actually gonna work a deal with Sioux Center and the city, I think, for natural gas.
On that note, that was interesting, I remember Carl up there was saying how they wanna run the pipeline for the methane right through the right of way, and then.
Yeah.
And have no expense, no easements.
Yeah.
There's some things I gotta be straightened out with that.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. But it's just different things, you know, for looking forward, you know, and we're sitting here doing budget cuts, and, and being told we're gonna have a smaller purse to pull the string tight on. So, just thoughts, so, I ate up my ten minutes, good job, Ty. Let's move on to the ten fifteen, discuss, take action. Are you guys quitting, I mean, picking next Colorado? All right, assigning city-held tax certificates and tax abatement for parcel one, three, zero, two, three, seven, eight, zero, one, zero. And I see our tax people coming up. I'm not gonna read all them numbers. Hi, Dan.
Good. Retirement is great. I'm sure this is wonderful.
I think I'd very much do. Okay, so what we're asking is if the county will abate the full amount of some property taxes on three parcels that are across from Sheriff's Property. The tax sale certificates, there have been tax sale certificates since nineteen ninety-one, it's been thirty-two years since any property taxes have been paid on this property. It's three parcels of.
Made a copy, if anybody wants.
That's what she said.
That's what I look at, I'm like.
There are, there's a map at the back that shows the three parcels, then we have the three tax sale certificates. Yes, then we have the three property.
It says one's in yellow. No, I'm across the street.
She's across.
That was.
The other side.
Okay.
Okay.
So, ten streets, ten streets is running, one way, Oakwood Drive is going the other way.
So, over all these years, it's grown up to thistles and. And so we have been for thirty-five years, been mowing along, at least along the street, because never has it been done by street. And trying just to keep some of it down, so that isn't all blowing over on our acreage, because we try to take very good care of the, our part of it. And, um, so, after retirement, I, this was one of my checklist things to check into it. I hired an attorney, um, to look it over, to make sure, because, um, the total amount of liens that was on that three lots from Tommy Johnson's legal issues was three point five million.
Ooh, wow.
And that followed the property owner. So, no one's ever wanted to, you know, have to, but then I get to doing some checking, because I used to work in the auditor's office, where I audited properties, so I did with the help of, um, Perry's Office and Denise. They pulled all the information, and then I took that the state had released all their liens, but the Fed, from what I could tell, had quit renewing their lien, so then I had, wanted to hire an attorney to make sure, because I sure didn't want three point five million. All those volunteer trees, but my wish is that, you know, if you're in favor, um, to get in the tax certificate, then, um, we would work on starting to clean it up and, uh, make it, you know, undesirable, and start paying property tax on it.
So, in your packet, there are the property tax statements that were sent out, or the printed this year. Um, it comes to about, between the three of them, it comes to about three hundred dollars a year, maybe four hundred a year in property taxes. After that, we have the charges that have accrued over the years, that's on the top. The taxes that are actually due, bring everything current, would be nine thousand and eighty-two dollars, interest and fees is twenty-two thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. So the total we'd ask to abate would be thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars, and then to assign the certificates to Sherry, and she'll make sure it gets taken care of, and taxes get paid going forward.
So, when you send these out, they don't really go anywhere.
They, those don't anymore, because they've come back with bad addresses, whatever address we had on file for him, has come and gone, and.
Oh, my God.
Right, they just come and, they just print and sit here, because there's no way of contacting him any longer.
Try to get ahold of him or your attorney.
The attorney tried to find him, and the last he could find was that he's in Ireland. Now, isn't there a ninety day?
Okay, so I talked to Sherry about that, um, that's when it's not counting out, the county health can, can override that ninety day process.
So, so currently, the county holds it, there's nobody that's holding the certificate anymore.
Right, no, we are the only ones that are holding the certificate, no investor ever.
No investment ever.
Right, there was never any investment, yes.
Yeah, right, right, there's not, they're back to, so, most of it is interest and penalties, right? So, and so we're, uh, suggesting to forgive all of it.
Thirty-six, thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two.
Yeah, for thirty-one years.
Did I get that right?
Thirty-two years.
Thirty-two, okay.
Thirty-two years.
Yep, it's thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Okay.
And no sense.
And then to assign. The tax sale certificates, all three of them to Sherry, so that they shouldn't take.
That would go back on the tax.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's about three fifty, I think, a year. And then I'm sure, once we start cleaning it up, that's probably gonna go away.
But, um, but yeah, but it's starting, I mean, I live in the neighborhood, it's starting to be a hazard, trees are coming down, nobody's taking care of that. We have kids in the neighborhood.
And there's kids go up in that property, because it's, you know, it's timber, and there's people live on top of the hill. And so, now I'm seeing teenagers driving their vehicles, um, as far as they can get them, and then they can't go any farther. And then they, they must have friends that.
Is there a fence around it now?
I don't know, I, I don't know what we'll do, but we'll probably definitely, uh, you know, put some signs or something that people know, yes, yes. We had to do that, some with our own, yeah, property too.
I would be in favor of getting it back on the tax rolls and, uh, getting it taken care of, you know, all the things being a hazard. Um, just looking, uh, forgotten, as to drive down that, uh.
You're not gonna get blood out of a turtleneck, it could go another thirty years.
That's right, that's right, and I, you know, I drive by there myself, and I guess I've never thought about why it, you know. Could it possibly be turned into a city lot for, uh, construction?
You know, if, if you see that map, um, that, um, Ty has right now, if you notice, it's kind of funny, the other lots go this way. And those three lots go this way, so they're kind of no, so if someone, and maybe we get it all cleaned up, somebody would want to, uh, build and turn it into, but they'd have to buy all of them in order to have, you know, um.
And it does, it goes three separate city lots, but they, but there'd be a lot of dirt work that would need to be done to make them be usable lots. A lot of, but the city, uh, would be their.
How much ground is it?
It goes pretty much straight up.
I know, I think, I don't know, I went on Google and tried to do the calculator, just in your acres, and it looked like it's point seven zero.
Okay.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, that's true, it's a thirty-six million.
All right, so, I'd make the motion.
Jean, make the motion that we would abate the thirty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars, and.
Assign the taxes to Sherry.
And assign it to Sherry Vaughn.
There's no West Bank taxes on it now, and it's.
Yeah, I'll second. And was, was, was there anything else that we need to have in that?
Just trying to think that through.
Yeah.
We, we're just trying to think back to past, if we move, it's in the city limits, can we do that, all of the, the city have to do, but we hold the certificate, that's where, that's where I'm allowed to do it. We hold it, so we can do it all.
Right, nobody else wanted it.
I think we're, we're good.
Okay, that's what I was gonna wonder, I see you were over there at your furrow.
Just thinking it through.
Well, we need to think it through, make sure we don't, have to go back and do it.
I wanna see it go.
We'll make sure we're doing it legally, I get you, that's why.
And then Sherry, kudos to you for taking this project on it, cleaning something up.
It's, it's been a little bit, but it's just something. You know, you have that list.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table. And a second, any further discussion beyond what we've got? Okay, all in favor, say so by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries, welcome to the.
You'll see, I can still be driving by.
They all want to see your trees. It'd be nice to have that cleaned up.
Right on time.
Okay, now our next for our ten twenty-five, a resolution to withdraw from the articles of agreement, which formed workforce development, this seems to be a statewide movement.
Well, after the talk that, uh, when, uh,
Rick comes back.
When Rick came, I mean, it's just, if we don't, we're gonna be, uh, the ones holding the bag on facilitating, and it has been proven fact that a county can't afford with the funds that they give you to be the lead person on it, if you don't know where life would be. So I would agree to just join in and back out.
That's true, I'd like to add, it's not that it's going to go away.
No.
Because the Department of Labor, by the, is dictated, you know, with the funds to the state, that you have to provide workforce development. So there will be some form of it, and it could come back to us counties, and we, and we renegotiate a new twenty-eighty.
Right.
So it's not saying that we're getting rid of it altogether, but it's handing it back to the state and saying, this does not work for us.
Correct, correct, it's been proven that the funds that you're giving to the counties to facilitate this is a liability for us. Because we spend more, would have to spend more, running the program with all it has to be done, and there's no payback for us, and we have no time to donate. Uh, so the state will have to re, rethink it.
And if it was remotely close to doing what it was supposed to do, and it was, you could get the funds there needed, you wouldn't see every single county in this workforce district opting out of this to either, it's a bad agreement.
And if we stay in, we'd be tag, you're it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I understand.
Okay, so, does anybody else got anything further on that? I'd entertain a motion to.
It's a resolution.
Yep, I'd entertain a motion to withdraw from the article with agreement.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Mr. Mulvare makes the motion. It's Hayden's second, any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, Mr. Schultz. Mr. Mulvare.
Hi.
Mr. Dozart.
Hi.
Ms. Hayden.
Hi.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. On our agenda is discuss, take action, set time and date for public hearing. For the proposed property tax, this is where we're gonna keep up with what we know for now. Making sure we're on track with this. Oh, my. We save a name. Oh my, we save a name.
I have one. So as valuations stand currently, um this is what, and these dollars created are from, so the general basic is three point five levy. And that creates four point five million
Good.
in property tax, general supplemental is a one point four. And that creates one point eight million in property tax.
Okay.
And in rural, rural basic, three point nine five uh creates three point six million and rural supplemental is ten cents and that creates ninety-two thousand in property tax. That's based off current levies, that's where we're at on current levies. So what the max property tax, what this resolution or what this hearing is about is creating dollars or approving maximum dollars levy. You're not approving a max levy, technically, you're approving the dollars. So even with the adjustment that the state plans on making, those valuations will decrease. This'll still be max.
Yeah.
Of course, we, well, with the levies, uh we're statutorily bound to, it won't create the same dollars.
Yeah.
But this'll still um resolve, going through this process. It's an extra hearing we have to do before we can even think about doing our budget hearing.
Okay.
So, if that makes any sense at all.
I think I'm tracking you.
So this is more about the dollars than the levies, but it shows you what the levies created. It shows you what it created in our current budget year, you can see that first column is twenty-two, twenty-three property tax. So that's current, that's the year we're in right now. And then using, then that next column shows you what the new valuations are. Just the valuations, it doesn't show you, and what those same, at the new values, what the same dollar gets you in a total levy for general, so four point eight oh nine oh three, you see that in that column?
Four point, okay.
And then, and down by rural for the rate for rural would be three point nine eight. So then the third column shows you those same values, the new values, the the ones we know today anyway. Um at our current levy rate. And we are dollars those create.
We are maxed out at the three.
Right, and then that proposed percentage change, that last column, you'll notice that both of those are under the two percent. They're under a two percent increase, so what this hearing will show to the public is that even at the same levy rate, we're still looking at under a two percent increase in dollars. Created by the new valuation and the same levy rate.
Cause if we're over the two percent, we'd have to go jump through.
Well, so regardless of where you're at in that change, if you're over the two percent, then it creates um a super, a super quorum vote meeting. So you'd have to have, um what is it, a two-thirds vote for a a board of five, it would be a four out of five would have to vote for it. So since it's under two percent, a simple majority vote will pass the resolution of this max levy on the date of the hearing, back in March. Um which is the date I'm proposing that you hold the meeting, so we would publish February twenty-second. Um with a meeting being, the hearing being held on the meeting for March seventh. Would time everything out, allowing, since um of the Denison Bulletin only publishes one paper now, where we used to have the flexibility of either a Tuesday or a Friday paper for publication. So that would allow us the proper time to publish. And then um it's a ten and twenty um day hearing passed, you know, past the publication date, does that make sense? No, no less than ten days after publication, no more than twenty days after publication is when you're allowed to hold the hearing, so March seventh allows for that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So if we hold it on February twenty-second and then approve it on March the seventh.
No, we'll publish on the twenty-seventh, you'll, your hearing, the hearing would be March seventh.
March seventh, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, alright.
Yeah. Which is the first Tuesday in March.
Yeah.
I'm making a motion, set the public hearing, proposed property tax levy for March seventh, ten AM.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Schultz. Set the max, max levy, no, yeah, max levy. Hearing for March seventh with a publication date of twenty-two February, seconded by Mulbauer. All those in favor, state so by saying aye. Oppose no, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're going now memory.
Did you say ten AM? Yeah, it's a lot.
That was once again legislation that added.
Alright, next up on our agenda, discuss and take action, Jill Wonder. Jill Wonder of Plains Area Mental Health Prevention and Education. Come on up, ma'am.
Yeah, I brought a lot of paper with me.
You like it.
For your information, here's some business cards, so I'm Jill Wonder, I'm the clinical supervisor for Plains Area here in Denison and Idagro. Um so the first paper that I'm gonna hand out is the request for funding to talk about how we would use the funds. And it is front. And then I brought along a couple of supporting articles of why it's important to have assist training is the first thing that we requested. We have several clinicians that are already trained in assists. And we've had with turnover, we've had people leave uh Plains Area that were also trained. And so we're just looking to replace at least one person with that assist training. And so the first article does talk about the impact that assist has on the suicide rate. And there's all these errors. And then. Yes.
Come bring a basket.
Yeah.
And it was raining, so luckily I had a T-shirt and just to set on top of everything. Do here, and then this article talks about substantive disorders and the suicide rate. And so I'll give you all a minute to look at stuff and then ask questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the amount that you're looking for is ten thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars for this program?
Correct.
And as far as identifying the targeted families, um how do we go about that? What, I know there's HIPAA and all sorts of things that would be involved in, but are you getting those from the school? Are you getting them more from referrals that this, that somebody has referred to Plains Area?
It would be a mixture.
A mixture, okay, so we are kind of working with the school?
Yes, yeah, I have two full-time school-based therapists here in the Denison School. And then I have another clinician that goes to the other Crawford County Schools as well.
So this will all help with them in our schools.
Correct, right, yes, yeah. And so our goal is to have our two Denison school-based do some of this work as well because they are in the schools, they know the students and the families.
What, are they doing this now?
Um they do some education, yes, um and we also do, I have a school-based clinician that goes to the ESAT um on Thursdays as well, and so he's involved in that part of it.
Does it, Jill, does it reach our other county schools?
Yes, yeah.
So those, those, those.
So like we have IKM, Boyer Valley, Charter Oak View, and our Weaver that we go to as well.
Okay.
And we could go to Sluswick if there was a need as well.
Okay, excellent, excellent.
We have one in Sluswick though, full-time, don't we, or?
No, um Sluswick, they do referrals and they, I have some office students. But not anybody that goes up to Sluswick right now.
Okay, cause I knew that Sluswick was part of it.
Yeah, yep, they are.
So basically you're proposing sending someone to some training.
Mm-hmm.
And that training is going to be in substance abuse?
So the training is in assist. So the first article, it's the Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training.
Okay.
And um we like, we have several other clinicians that are trained in it and um the person that does our emergency services is also trained in it.
Okay.
And so we do put on several assist trainings throughout the year.
The question that I kind of had with this opioid settlement money is, you know, in Crawford County, we are aware that there's a problem. And so you have a family that just is reoccurring, that's just a constant revolving door. Would some of these funds be able to, let's say that they want help, but we just have never had the money to send them away, you know, to a rehab place to to get one of those family members out of the cycle? Would they, would these funds be something we could set aside for that person that just doesn't have the resources to get the help they need above uh going to, just actually going to rehab, let's just call it rehab? Would, how do we, would these funds be, uh, do we have funds for that?
There are funds through the region that we can, that can be applied for, that would be separate from this.
Okay.
And so we have integrated health services that helps with those applications.
Rolling Hills?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Are they hard to get to though? Is there too many hoops to jump through, too many questions to answer? That by the time, you know, you need that help, you're thrown out because you didn't answer one question right? And that person that really needs the help, that this money is designed to help? Could we get right to it by not having to go through the region?
That is a good question, that I would, I would definitely take to Kim and Alicia and ask about that. But our IH, our IHS workers do help with those applications.
Okay.
So they would come into the office, do a Zoom call, phone call to help with that.
And how long would that normally take, do you know, I mean, weeks?
No, I, um, our IHS, they do schedule those sessions um and try to move as quickly as we can and still be as thorough as possible.
See, that's kind of a word, I've been hearing a lot that, you know, they go into their initial meeting and they say, oh yes, we can help you, but I can't see them for three weeks, and then in that meantime, we've lost their enthusiasm to actually get some help.
It's like, as far as therapy goes, yeah, yeah, and that's where IHS comes into play because they do fill in those gaps. Um we're working on hiring more clinicians at Plains.
And I, well, and once again, even if we have all of the therapists on staff and because of the criteria to get in uh with the monies that are available, I'm feeling like a lot of people are being turned away because they don't fit into that exact box. And so I feel with this extra money, we could possibly cut some of the red tape and help a specific need that's out there in Crawford County, because this is our Crawford County money.
Right.
To be, you know, put together with the region's money.
Right, right.
To help our Crawford County uh at-risk citizens.
Mr. Mulbauer, you took a breath, do you need, do you have something?
Yeah, I do. Question on the assist training, how long of a program is that? They get a certification when they're done, does that open up any door? Does that open up any doors through Rolling Hills as far as other funding mechanisms? Because we have somebody that's certified in the assist training, and where's that?
So the assist training that the person would go to for the training, are you asking about?
Yeah, yeah, where they hosting it.
So there's actually several locations, um I know the next one that isn't full is in Louisiana and it's a five-day training.
Okay.
And then they have some in Canada, there's, I think, one in Denver, Colorado in July or something like that, so um they're hosted all over. And so then the person that's going to the training um would become a trainer. And then we would have two people do the training for each, um, and they were gonna have them in Carroll, Cherokee, kind of like in the Plains Area location um that we serve, so.
This money's going for.
So this, no, so this would be just Crawford County, so the person that would be going to the training, I'm pretty sure it'll be me, that'll be going, so. Yeah.
Next one, a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, did I, did I answer all of yours, though? Okay.
So if I spend this kind of money on a trainer, what guarantee do we have that that training doesn't follow along? You know, you're gonna get another job, not knowing, like, you know, we spent, you know, six thousand dollars on training the trainer. What guarantee do we have that that knowledge that we've paid for is going to be forever? Not that anything's ever forever.
Right, right, um and.
Jill's kind of anchored here.
I'm not going anywhere, um I have kids in high school, so I'm not, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm not going, I'm not going anywhere, so I love where I'm at.
To make sure that we're getting those.
Yeah.
Well, I'm in favor.
Mr. Dozar has a.
So currently we have no one that has this certification?
We do, yes, yeah, um we've had a couple people that have left Plains Area for other opportunities and they had the assist training as well, and so we're looking to help kind of build that program backup because we had a couple people leave.
And without these funds, you're saying the funds are not available to do that, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't have all of the financial piece of Plains Area, but it's, I mean, funding has decreased. Like our CCDHC program did decrease this last year when we got accredited, re-accredited.
Arthur, you have a question as well?
Jill, my understanding is that the MAT, the Medication Assisted Treatment for Opioid Issues, um is that something that Plains is looking to bridge with Crawford County Memorial Hospital? So that's more of a comprehensive, cause my understanding that MAT is more of a long-term focus for those struggling with that.
Yes, so we have somebody within Plains that does that, that's Marky, and um so she, that's who we would be working with. Okay.
Who is it with?
The more, Marky, she's one of our prescribers.
Yeah, I think the more we can have that available, I just, like a pain clinic without having a specific pain clinic um to help address those issues would be a good way to spend those resources.
Anyone else?
So I just talked, I mean, the opioid funds and specific uses that we're attached to and this fits all.
This fits everything.
So, I mean, it's a legitimate, I think. And as a board, I think we talked about prevention treatment.
Correct, correct, education.
Right.
Kind of good, you're checking a lot of blocks for us, there you go, thank you.
And I like it, it's not a new position being created that someone would have to be sustained after the funds run out, so, which is a nice.
You're actually setting up a program that actually will be there. Train, the train, trainers.
But I feel like with this kind of a situation, the person dealing with it has to understand the whole ramification, how how we prevent it, and if you don't have the skills to to teach it, you you can't fix the problem. You really, it takes a certain person to understand and get to the root of the problem, and that's what we're trying to do with this money. Want to make sure we're using it to the best that we can, so.
Okay, what is the board's flagger?
It's the boxes and uh we need to get moving on it because. It's the boxes and uh we need to get moving on it because there is a problem in Crawford County. And we have the money to start trying to see if we can assist our families to.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
This is Hayden making a motion. Mr. Mulbauer, seconds. All in favor, states so by saying aye. Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carries. Did you guys get copies of this? You got stuff.
And any questions, please reach out.
I thought it was a, this is your brain, this is your brain on drug.
Just say no, right?
I know, I'll message Kim. She's, she's the one that's gonna answer those questions. And who should I?
The audit, I'm Terry Martins. Uh, it's on the website, but my email should be on the website. Well, that's just it. I would think post-training and then you, we would reimburse actual expenses. So it's T. Martins. Martins, M.A.R.T.E.N.S. T.E.R.R.I. We should do that every time, that's okay.
There you go.
No, no, they haven't sent much.
Thank you, Jill, appreciate you being here.
Thanks, Jill.
Thanks for what you're doing for the community.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So this is just the first step.
There's still some.
There is.
It might take him a while, but he's.
Kind of set this to me ahead of time and so.
It is a good start.
We can't take action before ten fifty-five.
Okay. Watch us tell them it's time to stay.
What's this from?
That's the follow-up on the airport picture. I just had that printed out for everybody to kind of look at. I think the most important thing for you to skim to is gonna be the FAA, uh, what followed up on that. November of twenty twenty-one, things have changed and I don't know, you know, but I just want everybody to see that, you know, as far as our concern, that's been metted, so to speak. I don't know if it's what we're looking for.
Okay.
Trying to make sure that we're not reinventing any wheels.
Okay.
Oh, you read my emails, okay. I just printed it out, because I didn't have a chance, the FAA one was the one that particularly. I don't know if we think that's too old, if we want to have it updated.
Chris, we're a little bit early, but why don't you come on up here and get started? And I'm sure you'll have a little bit of a lengthy report.
I did, uh, you may not have seen it, but I emailed you a digital copy this morning.
Well, you know.
Saved a tree. Here's the uh signed one from our conservation review. Wants to peruse it.
Are you perusing? Or do you have a digital?
I do have a digital, but. Couple asked for one last year and I'm like, I'm gonna be ahead of the game. As per normal, uh, mostly what we talk about is the uh revenue, um, yellow smoke. And you gotta remember, this is back to June, uh, the year that ended in June, so. We're always cutting off revenue in the middle of the summer, because that's the end of the budget year. So Yellow Smoke was in twenty twenty-one, was a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-two in camping and went up to one hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight. Uh, camping days went from fifty-five hundred and fourteen to over seven thousand. A lot of that, you know, we're still getting the COVID bump and all that, that yellow smoke. Um, Nelson Park actually decreased, uh, twenty twenty-one was thirty-six thousand, two fifty-one, which to be honest, was, was an outlier. That was higher than we, we were anticipating. Uh, that's the highest that's ever been. And it dropped back down to a more normal thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two. And they went from twenty-one hundred and thirty-nine nights camping to about nineteen hundred and sixty-three. Uh, five open shelters down at Nelson Park, uh, very, don't get a lot of usage on those. Um, lookout at Yellow Smoke, uh, went from seventy-three rentals to ninety-nine. And again, we have a lot of cancellations and things with people getting sick. So some of that's skewed a little bit. Uh, thirty-two open shelters at Yellow Smoke, uh, basically compared to the year before was thirty-three, so. Pretty much the same. So ten thousand, nine eighty for shelters uh versus ninety-two eighty the year previous, so it went up a little bit. Um, cabins are another, another one that people tend to have a lot of interest in. And in twenty twenty-one, the total cabin revenue for both parks was thirty-two thousand, three forty, and that went up to just a touch over forty-one thousand. That number of nights in Yellow Smoke actually went down, but a lot of that, again, COVID and all that stuff, went from three hundred and fifty-two nights to two hundred and seventy-four. And we also, uh, we had raised the price on a couple of cabins. And then we had the big cabin that we didn't have for the whole year previous to that, that's a hundred and thirty bucks a night. Uh, Nelson Park, similar nights of camp are in the cabins, went from two hundred to a hundred and ninety. Uh, if you're keeping track, Nelson Park is about sixty-two hundred and thirty dollars of that forty-one thousand. So that's steadily, I don't remember the exact numbers, but the last few years, I mean, it's, you know, it was in the fours. And then I think last year was in like fifty-three or fifty-four hundred of that. So it's, it's steadily increasing down there as people, you know, hear about the, those primitive cabins we have there and they get a little more usage and stuff. So our total receipts uh outside of cabins was two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight thirty-eight, and with cabins was two hundred just shy of two hundred and fifty-six thousand in total revenue for the, for the conservation board. So camping wise, like normal, I mean, it's been pretty good. Uh, Yellow Smokes went up, I think at least the last three years have been new records every year. Um, I don't know how long that's gonna keep going, you just never know, but. So that's where we're at with that. Didn't have a lot of big projects at that point. We did, this was the year we did actually, get the eighteen and a half acre Aurelius Pond was actually put in our name. So in January of twenty twenty-two. So it started before that, but it was actually transferred to us in, in this year, so.
What you have to do out there, like mow or anything or?
Aurelius, you mow the parking lot once a month. When we do ruin them. I pull the trash every now and then. No, no, and there is gonna be a dock, uh, Peasants Forever, one of, there, I got a grant for a dock, which I talked about during the budget thing. That should be going in the spring. So there'll be a little dock at the fishing platform on the end, uh, going in there. And Peasants Forever's covering the county's portion of that. Kelly. She had the five hundred and forty-one school programs, and that's not days, obviously. She counts every class. You know, she might have like eight programs in a day, you know, at Dennison. So that's, that's how she counts those.
She's being busy though.
Yeah, she's, there's probably not too many nationalists in the state that do more than her.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I would venture, you're correct.
And uh, three public programs, and that was for roughly about ten thousand people, about, you know, seventeen, eighteen average per class. And obviously, most of that's school programs.
That snake has sure got to put on a lot of miles.
Yeah, she's definitely, I've actually written policies, so she would do less, but she doesn't like to say no to the teachers, because, I mean, she's average week, she's, she's out of school, so. And everyone, everyone pretty much knows who Kelly is at this point. If you, if you have kids, especially, and live in Crawford County.
All three of mine went this summer.
She is certainly asked.
Yeah, that's for sure. But that's, that's mostly what we talk about every year, unless you guys got questions.
The Conservation Board's annual report.
Mr. Schultz makes a motion to defer the annual report. As I didn't say, she seconds it. Any further discussion? None, all in favor, states so by saying aye. Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thanks, Chris.
All right. Chris, great job, appreciate it. Pass that on to your people too, I think you're doing great work. I camp out there too. Alrighty, let's bring us up to the eleven o'clock annual report for the historical preservation. Amy, would you please give us an update?
I did find that ironic, because this morning my Facebook post had a Stuart sign ad come up, remember, three or four years ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Uh, Stuart Lumber?
The same, same company that we were saying about. Information sign where the courthouse property.
Um, you know, that's the house, Stuart Lumber, the guy that I live in, the house I live in, owned Stuart Lumber. Isn't that cool?
History, history, history.
Yeah. Um, okay, so we have to do this annual report for the state every year, and basically just says what we did, um, what we accomplished. Um, basically, the thing that we always tell is the fair booth. It's our greatest accomplishment is the fair booth. I think we, I think we get a lot of people um engaged. They come out by the booth, they learn stuff, we learn stuff. Um, but we did, um, for the first time, did the calendars, that was a pretty good success. We were able to add another about fifteen hundred dollars to um our grant program, so that's nice. And then um, the other project that Christie um had worked on is trying to find the lost cemetery on the commune land. And that is something that's still kind of ongoing, but um, that was kind of a, a different, I guess, thing for us, that was kind of neat. Um, but still trying to figure out who the people are that's buried there, so.
What year did they think that was, that was that?
It would have been the eighteen, probably sixties, seventies, something like that. So obviously before Dow City Cemetery, so.
But it's buried, yeah.
I will say, I think it's one of the more popular booths of fair, because people really take time and look through the information and ask questions and.
Yeah, we try to look back, because we, sometimes we've had so much information there that people, you know, are almost overwhelmed. But I don't know, I thought last year's booth was pretty good.
It was really good.
I think you guys are doing an excellent job.
Yeah, we have fun with it.
Do you get, do you get like a lot of input from some of the older members of our community?
Yeah. Yeah, we had, um, some people point out some other cemeteries that we didn't know about. And when I say cemeteries, it's, you know, family. Probably two or three people, you know, something like that. Um.
Our back south on the river.
I don't know. See? Um, and then the other thing that we were able to do was update our county website with all of the cemeteries. So it's kind of a neat deal that if you're out wandering around and you wanna do a cemetery tour, you can just go on our website on your phone and it'll plot out where those cemeteries are and kind of give you a little bit of history. So that was another thing that we were kind of proud of.
So as you're out driving around, you could find, thanks to you guys, we could find it on our phones?
Yep.
You know, and you get a lot of people that are then genealogy.
Well, yeah.
And they're always looking for a cemetery.
I have a cousin that, um.
That's excellent, thank you.
Yeah, and then the other thing we have to do is submit what are, what we want to do for this next year. Um, and, you know, we're trying to get people engaged on Facebook. I mean, that's really the only social media that I know how to use. That's, that's what we're going with right now. Um, we're hoping finally we'll get the Percy Schofield um headstone. Um, actually Louise and I need to check up on that on tomorrow, but we're hoping to have that in conjunction with the Dow House, they're gonna have this big rendezvous um in June. So we're hoping to combine both dedication of the headstone along with that rendezvous, rendezvous, and hopefully it'll be a big kind of a cool celebration that draws people hopefully. Um, and then uh one of the projects that we keep saying we're gonna do and we just haven't got, we need to work with secondary roads and um conservation to get the town, the lost towns, get those signs back up. Um, I know there, there are a whole bunch of them are setting down at secondary roads, so I was hoping to get it done before Glenn retired, but that didn't happen.
They were up at one point in time and somebody took them down or?
I think they just, yeah, okay, yeah, so conservation was gonna make them for us, because they're just wood signs.
Take them down and threw in a ditch, so it wasn't.
Yeah, no, I think they just, yeah, so. Yeah, I would say. And then, so yeah, that's, that's.
Very good.
I just need you to sign that, so I can get it submitted.
Okay, certified local government annual report. So it says it's a discussion, take action.
I'll make that motion approved in court.
Mr. Mulbauer makes a motion, Mr. Dozar, second. All in favor, states so by saying aye. Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carries. Does this need to be stamped too, or do you got another thing?
Um, I can stamp it, yeah, if you wanna go ahead and sign that.
Okay, all right, well, please remain seated, as a favor. Put your insurance hat on. And uh, and eleven o'clock, so we're good to go. Start with the uh insurance.
So, we had, you know, we get a lot of people that come in and try to sell insurance, but and I kind of do a due diligence to make sure that they're a good reputable company, that kind of stuff. Um, and this seems, I mean, this, uh, Globe Life is, they're rated excellent. The products are great. Um, it's one of those things that just asking to see if it's something that you want to allow the employees to be offered, um, would be no cost to the county whatsoever. It actually doesn't even go through payroll. Basically, all they're wondering is if we can do like some kind of payroll stuffer and, um.
We're, we're giving you permission for them to solicit our employees.
Right, right. And what it is, it's, it's, I hate to say this, it's like Aflac. It's the ancillary products that our health insurance does not pay. So it's like if a heart attack, heart disease, strokes, there's cancer, accidental injuries.
So we're just so, like a little insert, if you wanted more information, here's the website to go through, we're not.
Yes, we don't do any, we don't do meetings in here, we, and I already told them that, that they can't hold meetings here. It's basically they provide the payroll stuffer. It's basically they provide the payroll stuffer.
Okay.
If you guys want to allow it, and like I said, I don't like to just let anyone come in because I don't want, you know, because when we're doing a payroll stuffer. It's almost like we're saying, oh yeah, this is a good company, so I don't really like to do that. So that's why I kind of weave through those kind of people, but this, this is, we're pretty brutal, yes. Right, yeah, yeah, cause you don't want, I mean, I certainly don't want.
And we get a lot of them at the counter and we pretty, we grill them pretty hard.
And if an employee decides to go to use this, it doesn't come out of their paycheck.
No, it has nothing to do with us.
Nothing you have to do, it just simply drives in the information.
Yeah, and I actually, I just did like, what a policy for me would be. And, um, you know, it was actually a pretty good product and what I like about them is, if you don't. If you have the product for twenty years, you get all of your returns back, there's a, it's a return of premium.
So they would check any of these three plans.
Or all of them or whatever.
And when you did your numbers, did you pick all three plans?
I did, I, I, yeah, I did like the best of the best to see how much it was and it was not.
Can you just give us a range of what it was a month, just?
Well, it was based on age.
No smoking.
Um, they didn't even ask that, honestly. So it was like a hundred and twenty dollars, I think, if I got the best of everything. But if you guys remember, Kelly fell off the rocks in Florida when we were fishing. We do. And broke ribs and had we had this policy, cause we just kind of did this little scenario. He, we would have got a check for like seventeen thousand dollars. Based off of him just breaking his ribs, so.
And some of them, even if you just get a physical, you're getting, you're getting your premium back.
Right, yeah.
Some of your bill and then give you money back.
So. It was, I thought it was a very nice plan, so.
I have one more question.
Yes.
They, it has nothing to do with them being an employee, so even if they didn't work for the county any longer, they could take that plan with them, it has absolutely.
Nothing to do with us, we're not paying anything towards it, it's not coming out of their paycheck. This is just saying, hey, this is out there, if you wanna take it, if not, you know.
I, I just think we can't say that enough, that it's, yeah, right, so if all covered adults pass away for any reason, while the coverage is in force, we immediately return your premium. Less, uh, any claims paid.
I mean, it takes a little bit to impress me and.
I, I think it's okay, I actually got the answer one, obviously that's.
Pass that on? I don't think it hurts anything, can they pay us a little something for the advertising?
They, um, yeah, they. They're, they're doing the payroll stuffer, oh, they're providing it, alright.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion then to a. How would we word that?
I guess I, I will move to approve HR to put in. We'll say, uh, allow Global Life to solicit. Yeah, payroll, uh, information from Global Life.
Got a motion for Mr. Dozork, second from Ms. Hayden. Any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thanks again, yep.
All right.
Here, call me and say Jean.
Okay, look at us, we're already at citizens input.
Doing better, you're great.
Citizens' input, do I have any input from the crowd? I'm immune, Dan.
In honor of today's. Well, I was culture heartbroken over CO2 pipelines and heartbroken over the big opportunity for private gain. Good morning, board, after reviewing the amended agenda, or believe it was amended, that you are going to be going into closed session once again, discussing the pipelines. I'm trying to put myself in your position, we're seated here around table today. And so these are some of the questions or concerns, I guess, that I have and I'm hoping that maybe you share with us as well. First of all, a lot has been stated and I'm basing maybe more of this conversation from the results of the board supervisors meeting. Then I was able to review last week from Shelby County. And I just know that the representative said, well, we want to be fully transparent and bring all the things to you. And I guess these are the things that I'm questioning in this transparency issue. I have seven things, I know that our time is limited and I don't want to take time away from your discussion when you're in closed session. So I don't know that I'm asking for a response, but I will be more than happy to forward these and then would like to have a response at a later date. The first one is anything on the economic impact data. I've been listening and watching, I've not heard anything yet, I didn't know. If you folks had been supplied with that, but I, I'm really interested to find out, is this going to be a boon for our county or is it gonna be a liability? The second one is the safety impact information. I guess I'm wondering why this project is even being considered since we know nothing about it. Some says they're not going to start any of that risk assessment Shelby County until the construction process begins. Well, in my opinion, the horse is out of the barn at that point. And it's unacceptable in my view. On a side note, has any EMS training been discussed with this board?
Actually, I've attended one. I've actually attended one that was here.
Okay, yeah, so I, like I said, I'd be interested to find out what those details are, I was not aware of that. The other concern is that the project plan, I guess. And maybe it's just my mindset, but I'm used to you save the process through, you have all your ducks in a row, you present it. And this plan just seems to be, oh, well, let's put in a pumping station, oh, wait a minute, no, not gonna be a pumping station. It's just gonna be this pipeline. Asked if there were gonna be any things, no, and then all of a sudden, we have two valve stations of which my property is one of those where that is being proposed. And now, surprise, we're gonna have a launcher receiver station in Crawford County. And again, what does that mean? What are the implications of that? My concern is that the mouth site that's proposed on my property is upland of a creek. That creek drains right into the Booyah River. The Booyah River has the bridge. And the other concern is that if we're putting this pipeline under railroad track, as I'm sitting on the railroad track and the train is going by. So are there seismic concerns with this pipeline also? I really want to encourage you to proceed forward with ordinance. I don't think that waiting until Shelby County's lawsuit even comes to light, which I understand isn't gonna happen until January of twenty twenty-four. So we're gonna be waiting this thing out. And I don't know that that really is going to maybe address the concerns and safety for Crawford County citizens. As I understand it, the county supervisors in particular have liability insurance in case there is a lawsuit. And the lawsuit, in my opinion, is just a bullying tactic to suppress opposition and I, I just think we need to stand up. To this kind of oppression, if you will, because if we do nothing, then it's the same thing, in my opinion, to say yes, it's okay. And I also think then that if the permit and the process goes through. And heaven forbid, there would be rupture or big safety concern. This board will have done what they can within their power to provide safety. And I think that that's going to be a good defense, you know, in in the future. So those are the concerns that I have, like I said, I don't expect any immediate response, but I appreciate hearing my concerns.
Thank you, Jim.
I appreciate your.
Anybody have any questions?
Also, and I wrote down the issues, but if you wanna send that to my emails, I can make sure I wrote them all down. We are, as a board, and I am trying to get to the bottom of every single one of those. To make sure that we're doing our best, our due diligence, you know, we have over eighty-one percent, is what I understand, and it's never gotten one more person that's signed up since the last time. We've gotten our numbers. What I really need to make sure is that what ordinance we put out there, does it still protect the people that are already signed and it needs to, you know?
And to address that, as I understand it, what's been done is done.
That's kind of the way I understand it too.
So, you know, those, I, I guess, I'm hoping that those people. Signed up and were told all of the pertinent information ahead of time. I personally have some grave concerns and have not gotten any of the answers that I've just addressed here.
I pulled an easement today just to kind of see what they look like, you know, I think they all look different. I really do believe that you have to pull them all, but I think the only way you could make sure your easement had everything that protected you is to make sure you knew what you, what questions you needed to ask first. Because they did not write them in favor of the landowners.
Well, as I understand it, the first easement that were signed was more or less, well, if you don't do this, Iowa's economy is gonna go in the tank. And I guess I don't believe that one hundred percent.
And they had an order right along with them to make sure you didn't have any chance to ask anybody else sign right now, and we'll give you a check and you can keep it even if it doesn't go through. And so that, that happened really fast, I think, that waiting for, we even knew what was going on.
And that's that transparency issue.
Right, right, well, and you're right with the, the issue of not being told upfront, what is actually going in Crawford County, which is what we care about, you know? If in fact, there is going to be a launcher, we just need to know what that is, where it's gonna be, and is it holding any extra liabilities for Crawford County? And we don't wanna find out that nineteen years from us, they wonder why didn't supervisors pay any attention to what was going in across the road from us? We got no money and everything, you know, when the launcher's going, we could hear it and there's all this disruption and we don't know the answers, we just don't know, right or wrong, could be. I just don't like the fact that they make it appear that it's, you know, little fuzzy bunnies they're putting on our properties, I, I don't agree with that, so we're working on it.
Ms. Hayden?
Fuzzy fuzzies, fuzzy bunnies, I want to hear you, come on out.
Thanks, Kim.
To the legislative conference on Saturday. Send it or ask Mr. Holden, and he said about that bill that you were talking about, the safety regulations are supposed to be included in that. Local ordinances are supposed to rule, so if you still can get the ordinance done, that will go back and overhaul whatever summit is doing. Every state needs to approve the permit and it needs to include some kind of damage, you're supposed to rule this that this week, which I have not seen yet. While we were there, there were probably a dozen other people for other issues, but after we spoke, they all came up and said, we had no idea this was going on in Crawford. So two, a couple of weeks ago, when you said you had to live under a rock to know this, that obviously was not true. So we're not doing our due diligence to get it out to the rest of the county citizens. So they want to approach you or, my question is, how do you want them? Do you want them to email you, text you, call you, cause they can't come to a Tuesday morning meeting, they're all willing forces.
Any of the above.
Any of the above to all of you, to one of you or?
There, we do have a supervisor's page that if you send it, we should all see it, but.
It's easier to send it to all, just to make sure we got it, cause our communications aren't always.
That way, you know, cause if you send it to Crawford County supervisors, right now, David and I.
That's what I was hearing earlier, so did you all give the message for me with Shelby County in summer presentation? So that part.
I got that from a couple places.
I got it, and, and I watched the Shelby County and I, I thought it was interesting at the end of it, when Steve, you know, indicated that. They're going around still having people sign and it's against the law of the land in Shelby County and you are breaking our law. As of this moment, it is the law, whether you, and so that was impactful, I think, the way that we.
Fifty thousand dollar fine.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, in interest of making sure that we actually get some good discussion in our closed session and get to our next meeting with Farm Bureau, who also wants to talk to us, I'm sure about these kind of things. I would like to move forward, do we have any other? Nope, thank you. All right, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn and move into, or move into closed session, not adjourn. I've got a motion from Ms. Hayden and a second from Mr. Dozork, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, chair votes aye.